In accordance with the allocation.
So what is going to be the order of construction? How are you going to deliver that site in 10 years in full?
To be fair, council, it's not part of the SADPD and therefore.
No, but these figures are in your figures. You've got statutory sites which are supposed to be delivering 11,462 houses over the next 10 years. And that's in those figures. So I'm just wondering how robust these figures really are. And I think it's quite legitimate for me to ask you, how are you intend? If this particular one site is going to take up over 10% of that number, how far is this really developed? And how long does it really take to build a village of that size?
Well, the housing land supply issues that we've had over the years have been very much about the build rate of sites. And there's no reason why if that site comes forward, if there are a number of different developers on the site, which you would expect for the size of the site, that once you get going, you can get up to 100, 150 units per annum. If not more than that, it will very much depend upon the number of individual developers that are on the site. And the build rate, which is obviously something that is in the control of developers. But clearly we do have an asset coming forward. And without having a crystal ball with me, but ultimately the intention was that that would be delivered within the plan period. I don't have anything in front of me today to say that it won't be. In terms of the numbers that would come out of that site towards the housing land supply, which is the other issue. Those numbers are limited anyway because of the time it's taken to get to this point. So I think that I understand the point in terms of, and then if I go back to the allocations of the sites that we're talking about, that we're removing from the green belt, we're not suggesting that we're suddenly taking housing out of the supply that we are sorry, out of the allocations that we are seeking to provide. So we're still working to the figures within the local plan strategy. We're just achieving them in a different way, which is through windfall sites as opposed to allocating sites within the green belt.
But the hole that you've got is 7,462. And that would mean that you'd need to get over the 10 years, 746 houses per year from Winful, not the 125 houses that you mentioned earlier on in this discussion. So I just, you know, I find it difficult to see how this all works. The build rate on Garden Village is unlikely to be that large. Because we're just, as you say, have gone into a recession, just as we went into a recession in 2008, 2009, which is why you've told me we didn't make the build rate for the last 10 years. So I think we've got to have some joined up thinking here. You know, I know you're responsible for planning, but these plans have to adapt. As someone mentioned, adapt and survive.
Sorry, it's all right. I interrupted you for two reasons. Firstly, Sarah's dealt with the issue of councillor Finlow's microphone still being on, which has now been, he's muted. So he can't, he'll have to unmute when he comes to speak. But more importantly, councillor Redstone, can I make sure that you are asking questions before I get into trouble? Because you are, this is the question, not the debate.
I have asked a question, but it's not been answered.
Okay, if you feel that you're not getting a satisfactory answer, perhaps we can leave that to later. Go on, I will give Mr Malcolm one more opportunity to answer your question.
So in terms of, so the local plan strategy has the housing allocations. The SADPD provides those non-strategic sites, so those small allocations. Between the two plans, we are confident that we are going to be able to deliver on the local plan strategy in terms of the housing numbers. So in terms of the overall provision, we're confident that we can meet the 36,000 that is proposed within the plan period. We're playing catch up a little bit, as I said, but like I said, the last three years, we've had 3,000 houses per annum, approximately 9,000, sorry, over those three years. We can only plan for sort of, if you like, the as and now. Clearly, again, we don't quite know what will happen over the next, either in terms of what will actually be the impact of COVID-19. For example, in terms of development, we've seen a small dip over the last six months or so. But we also don't know what will happen in terms of the government's proposals for plan making and in terms of the white paper that's coming forward. So we can only work with what we've got at the time. The plan's in accordance with the latest NPPF 2019. We're in accordance with all the other documents, we're taking on board the use classes changes that have come through. So the plan, the SADPD has been updated to reflect the guidance as much as we can do. But what we can't do is revisit the local plan strategy. If we did that, then effectively we abandon everything and we go straight into a full local plan review. And if we did that, then we wouldn't have certain policies in place. They would take a lot longer to come into place. And that would leave the council potentially at risk on some sites because we would still have strategies, yes. But we wouldn't have the full detailed suite of policies. So we would be relying on some of the national policies. So there is an element of sort of some risk if we don't start to sort of get some of the details in place. But the absolute confidence that this is in accordance with the local plan strategy and we will get basically the housing delivered in a way that we want to. But we can't control those external factors. We didn't know six, eight months ago, we were going to have a global pandemic that may impact on things going forward. We didn't know we'd be having virtual meetings until five months ago. So things do change and the planning system itself has to change. And we would have to change with that at the opportune time in accordance with guidance and policies that come through from central government.
Right, yeah, I do agree with you that things will have to change, but you are 3,000 houses down on your first 10 years.
Councillor Redstone, I suspect you're not going to get the answer you're looking for through this form of questioning. I would suggest that you formulate something else and put it into the debate so we can all take part. Your points are, I think, are quite clearly being made. But I think Mr Malcolm and you are perhaps approaching the mathematical equation from a different angle. So we'll deal with that in the debate if you don't mind.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm now going to ask councillor Edgar to come forward with his question, please.
Thank you, Chair. As a council, Cheshire East has had one of the best responses to neighbourhood planning in the country. And steering groups have worked to collaborate with officers to ensure that neighbourhood plans are in conformity with the NPPF, KELPS and emerging policies within this SADPD. However, in relation to the Green Gaps policy in the SADPD, some developers are already seeking to extend existing sites into the Green Gap that protects the coalescence between Crewe and the rural villages of Weston and Basford. This is contrary to the original boundaries of the sites identified within the KELPS and the Southern Growth Village, the Green Gap policy in this document and policies within the Weston and Basford neighbourhood plan. What confidence can the people of Weston and possibly other areas have in the robustness of Cheshire East planning if developers are allowed to change the rules? The changes in housing allocations in this document, especially in green belt areas, similarly affect the legitimacy of the local plan allocations and the neighbourhood plans. Thank you.
Okay, councillor, sorry, Mr Malcolm, do you want to address that or do you want to have another question first?
Well, I'll address that unless we've got, well, we'll carry on as I'm on.
That's fine.
In terms of what the SADPD isn't doing is anything with the Green Gaps because those were through the local plan strategy. We know previously they, yes, they have been subject to unplanned speculative development through that process. Again, going back to the numbers that we're looking at in terms of the housing allocations that we've sort of, if you like, removed. Yeah, as much confidence as we can do, we expect the 290 houses to be delivered accordingly through windfall sites and in terms of neighbourhood plans. Yeah, we've done loads of really good work with parit and town councils and I don't expect that to change. And we'd want to continue to work with parit and town councils accordingly. So I don't see anything greatly changing with the SADPD as a result.
Okay, thank you for that.
Okay, thank you, councillor Edgar, councillor Williams. Councillor Williams.
Thank you. I think you mistook my request to speak as a request, it was a question I had for councillor, town councillor Heath earlier. I do have a question for Mr Malcolm, if I may be permitted to ask it, but I'm happy to do it after other councillors who have yet had a chance to.
As you have the screen, I think we will, I will take full responsibility. And so you can go next and then I will call councillors Finlow and Nicholas in that order.
Thank you very much, Chair. Question for Mr Malcolm is as follows, and it's not a parochial one, but it is about the issue of boundaries. It was acknowledged during our briefings about the SADPD, particularly in relation to Oswea, other settlements in rural areas, if I understand it correctly, that tight boundaries, and some of them are very tight in terms of what's the definitions of village envelopes or town centres, means more development in open countryside. I like your sort of responses to that particular issue. Because I think that is something which is of grave concern to many of the members attending this meeting. Thank you.
Sorry, councillor Williams, do you mean in terms of those boundaries? Because they're tight, if you want, it's a concern or just?
The concern is, is the tighter the boundary, the more leeway it gives to developers. I understand the thing about windfall sites, I totally get that. Because if it's not a windfall site, it's got to be a planned site. And you know, my own view, I prefer planned sites than random windfalls. But I can see the point of that. But and also the issue of taking, you know, it's been debated to a great degree, the element of safeguarded land, et cetera. But I'm concerned about sort of settlements who, yes, they may need development because, you know, they need to be sustainable. And as the point was eloquently made by one of the speakers earlier, people in rural areas do need to sort of access to housing rather than having to move into adjacent towns in order to find bill accommodation. But I am concerned, and this is the nature of my question, is that by drawing those boundaries very tightly, I can understand how it makes life easier for officers and in planning terms. But to my mind, and I may have a fear here that you can relieve, alleviate, is that the tighter the boundaries drawn, the more scope there is for speculative development, particularly in open countryside. That may not, you know, we're not talking green belt here, but it is still open countryside. And I know you've answered Steve Edgar's question about the Green Gaps. But I still have a concern about building an open countryside that may be bought about by having the boundaries and the village envelopes, if you like, very tightly defined. I could ask a bit more along the lines of the sort of questions that councillor Heath was raising, but I think I'll reserve that for the debate.
Thank you, Mr Malcolm.
I mean, it's quite an interesting analogy that there's a concern of the boundaries being tightly drawn. If they're not tightly drawn, then you can absolutely guarantee they will be subject to further development. I think in terms of that they're tightly drawn, but you've got to look at it in the context of, those are tightly drawn because we've got allocations for housing elsewhere. So if you take the plan as a whole, we've got site allocations, we've got some reliance on windfall, we've got some release from green belt. And again, going back to the local plan strategy, you've got things like the Garden Village up in Handforth, that again, released from the green belt. So it's part of a package that's coming forward as a local plan strategy, as you would expect, to plan for where we want developments. And therefore, the numbers that we're looking at are basically a combination of all those factors. So we've got boundaries that are tightly drawn. We've got somewhere those boundaries have been, if you like, flexed and loosened slightly to release either countryside sites or green belt sites in the past. And then we've got quite large scale local plan strategies for huge developments such as North Congleton or South Macclesfield. Lots of joint around Crewe, et cetera. So it's a combination of factors. And again, quite happy that those boundaries are tightly drawn. But we are nevertheless providing the, again, it's not only housing. I know it's always the focus, but we also have to be providing employment sites to go alongside with the growth that we were proposing. So it's probably similar to the theme against councillor Edgar, but happy that we've got that right balance and that the SADPD proposals don't change the nature of that balance in terms of the numbers that we're looking at.
Okay, councillor Williams.
It begs lots of all questions. I don't envy you this job because the question of balance, you balance something in one way and it upsets somebody else. That's inevitable. But I'm glad you've mentioned the issue of employment and other uses as well. Because I mean, that again, comes back to the question that councillor Heath raised earlier. Because I mean, I can see what you're saying on the boundaries issue. I could talk about the Alseria thing perhaps later in the debate rather than now. But yeah, you have answered my question at this time, but I still have some concerns, which I think I'll probably raise in the debate stage.
Thank you very much, councillor Williams. Okay, if I can then ask councillor Finlow, please.
Thank you, Chairman. Given the assurances we've received about projected housing numbers and housing land supply, can I suggest to David and Malcolm, we don't need all the safeguarded land you've currently allocated. That in other words, there is some latitude and some can be removed. And in doing so, should we not prioritise those that are in green belt? Because I understand that green belt status is removed on adoption of the local plan part two. So why are you removing housing allocations in green belts such as Presbury Lane, Presbury, which I welcome, and then re-opposing them shortly afterwards, long before 2030, as safeguarded land? And why are we compounding matters by issuing press releases entitled 'Council Proposes to Remove Green Belt Site allocations', when in fact we're removing them only to reimpose them? It's surely contradictory. Please reconsider.
Thank you. Mr Malcolm.
I'm going to end up repeating myself a little bit. I think in terms of the safeguarded land again, is to avoid taking additional land out of the green belt in the future. And that's what we're supposed to be doing. And that's what is being proposed. In terms of the numbers, we talked about those earlier on. I mean, ultimately, I suppose, given the concerns that have been raised, it's just something that, you know, these comments, I think, will have to be raised through the representations process. We've taken sites out of the green belt because we're going to go down the windfall site. But as part of that reassessment of the windfall sites, we've had to look also against the safeguarded sites and where those will be. So you write on the press release, and I know you've dealt with that offline in terms of with officers. Perhaps it was the wrong kind of message, if you like. But ultimately, we don't know what those sites would be safeguarded for. They are just safeguarded for future development. And like I said, as I said before, they may or may not come forward for development in years to come. Or that will move on to the next plan period that we'd be looking for. But as I said, there's a lot going to change before then, but we can't stop the process just because of that. So I think those points have been well made, Chairman. And obviously, it's clearly going to be a point that's going to be raised again and probably all the way through to the examination process, I suggest.
Okay, thank you very much. Paul, do you want to come back?
I like doing that.
Well, I still think, and I don't think that's been denied, that there is some latitude here to deal with the matter now. I know we don't resolve anything, it's only recommendations to the cabinet. But that, the issue of the prioritisation of green belt, of removing certain areas, I think is one we should follow up during this meeting.
Okay, well, we have a debate that we'll be following shortly. So if I can now ask councillor Nicholas to thank you for your patience. And if you'd like to ask your question now, please, councillor Nicholas.
Thank you, Mr Chair, that's fine. I've got two questions. So if our recommendation to cabinet today was the approval of the document or the SADPD, but with the removal of any reference to safeguarded land, can you tell me what the implications of this would be? And my second question is, if the land becomes safeguarded, can it be put back into green belts in the future? Thank you.
In taking a second one first, it would require, we're back to sort of like, almost like a reverse of the exceptional circumstances as to why it would go back into the green belt. So you'd end up having to reverse process. But in the main, if I'm honest about it, I'm not aware of it ever going back into green belt. But that would be the test that you would apply, be a valid amount of exceptional circumstances. I think in terms of the wider issue of not providing any safeguarded land would cause a problem in terms of as we go forward to the examination. Because effectively, there would be pressure to say, well, you're not complying with the local plan strategy. So I guess ultimately, the end result could be that it could be considered to be an unsound plan. And therefore, could mean that we, I mean, somebody used the expression earlier on about the previous local plan strategy being thrown out. That's potentially what could happen if that's the case. So it's down to the significance. It's still, I think, as has been raised by speakers today, it's clearly a, it's a significant issue. But as is also allocating houses, allocating green belt sites for housing. And we've made the judgment where we believe that those circumstances aren't there for the housing sites. But unfortunately, we can't make that same judgment for safeguarded land. And that's why we've ended up with that outcome. So I think it would put us in a very difficult position in terms of trying to take the SADPD forward to examination, knowing that effectively, it does, it does, I hate using this term, but it does. So it would run the risk of the plan being found unsound. Because it wouldn't potentially be, you know, in compliance with other policies. So yeah, I think that's the bottom line ultimately.
Okay, all right, thank you very much.
Any further questions from any member? Councillor Nicholas, have you finished with that question or do you want to come back?
No, I think that's.
Okay, that's fine. Any other members wishing to ask questions of Mr Malcolm? I've got one before we finish this part of the meeting.
Mr Chairman, I've had my hand up for 10 or 15 minutes.
I am sorry, councillor Wetherall, I did not see that and it's because I'm trying to rely on the chat. So I very much apologise and the floor is yours.
Oh, right. Okay.
I can't see another hand, hold on a minute. I'll let, just make sure, I'm just going to check there are no other hands up before I go. I have to open a different part of the screen, I think. No, it's not that one. I don't want to put my hand up. No, there are no other hands up, so the floor is yours, councillor Wetherall.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Under site allocations in the document and Crewe in particular, my question is concerning the Leyton area of Crewe. When is Cheshire East Council going to proceed with its sites at Leyton West? This is an essential site to meet the housing numbers by 2030. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. It's similar to the Garden Village, we've got applications in at the moment. They're just going through some final details on that. So I expect those applications to be with board in the same sort of period, probably over the next, well, I'll say the next two or three meetings without sort of promising that. But I'm expecting them certainly to come forward to members sooner rather than later. So yeah, that will be before you and I'm sure that will cause further debate and discussion at the time, councillor.
Good, thank you, thank you.
Any further question, councillor Wetherall?
No, that's fine, thank you.
Very much. So if there are no other questions, mine relates to something that was raised by a speaker earlier today. When Mr Tullwell made reference to the site at White Moss Quarry, that planning permission having now lapsed. I appreciate that having secured planning permission, that will be a material consideration should anybody else come forward. But I'm wondering how many other sites that may benefit from planning permission are at risk of falling foul of their longevity, their lifetime in the near future that might question whether or not we are perhaps looking at a land supply problem down the road? So obviously, they're counted today because they've got planning permissions. But if those planning permissions lapse and we have to do a recalculation, say in six months' time, and the applicants haven't sought to renew those permissions, are we looking at a significant risk? Or is the White Cross White Moss Quarry site an exception?
Thank you, Chair. I mean, I think, yes, so that permission, the application, I mean, it's been in for so long. So there is, I think, the permission's actually expired, the outline consent was actually expired for the White Moss Quarry site. So that's, I mean, you know, I think as I've said before, the housing monitoring review is going on at the moment. So we will do our updated figures. There was some work, well, not some, there's lots of work done for the stately inquiry to justify the council's position in terms of housing land supply. But clearly, we will need to sort of update those figures. And I'm not sure how much of the actual housing land supply was coming through the White Moss Quarry site because of the nature of where it was at in terms of the permissions. But clearly, that would have an impact. It would take a certain number out of the supply if they were included. So we will do the refresh and don't prejudge that. But I would fully expect probably it to be slightly lower than the current, whatever it is, 7.2 years, I think we've got at the moment. Because of the fact that we've had this sort of, you know, very unusual sort of last six months or so. So we're reviewing and we monitor them on a regular basis. As you won't be surprised to know, as does the private sector and developers. But we're still in a robust position at the moment. But yeah, we'll review that and obviously, there'll be reports and stuff to come forward to members as soon as we can on that.
Okay, so by the time, if there is a sharp change in the circumstances, we can expect that to be reported to us and obviously to form part of the further stages of the journey of the SADPD.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you very much. Now, I'm conscious that it is five to two. I do not want to have a significant break, which would normally be the case, because we are about to go into the debate session. But I am also conscious that some of us are more mature and might need to take a comfort break. So I intend that we suspend the meeting now until 10 past two, which will enable people to have a comfort break and make a drink as required. So if I can see you all back at 10 past two, please, and please be prompt. Thank you, Sarah. Thank you, Sarah.
Yes, I can see and hear.
Okay, councillor Finlow.
Present.
Thank you very much councillor Jeffrey.
Yes Chair.
Good. Thank you very much. Councillor Hogburn.
Hello, I'm here.
Thank you very much Steve. Councillor Nicholas.
I'm here too.
Councillor Redstone.
I'm here Chair.
Uh, councillor Wetherall.
I'm back too Chair.
And councillor Williams.
Yes, I can both see here.
I think that's a full suite. So, um, I now, unless there are any burning questions that you all thought of over your, um, uh, this little mini break, if, uh, if there aren't any, I'm going to go to the debate, but can you let me know uh, by indicating now if you've got a question to the officer before we start debating?
I do have one more if I may.
Yes councillor Nicholas, um, you were very patient. So you can go, uh, first this time.
Thank you very much for your indulgence there. Uh, a quick one, I, I think, uh, but just to clarify, the way I understand it, there are certain circumstances where green belt can be built on. Uh, can I just get, uh, information, would safeguarded land have the same degree of criteria as green belts? And I'm, I mean, I have in mind here that kind of social housing in particular.
Um, so normally, I mean, yeah, in the, in the same way, you, you, you're looking for very sort of exceptional sort of, exceptional circumstances to, to a degree in terms of the same sort of green belt test. It's, it's not green belt. Um, but then you'd have to come up with very convincing reasons why you wanted to use it. But what you've got to remember is it's kind of, it, it's safeguarded for, for future development. It's not just safeguarded and sort of, well, it's then available as a, as a possible option to be built on in the, you know, um, just for somebody to come and say, well, we've, we've, we've got a housing scheme or we've got a formal housing scheme, we're going to use that safeguarded land. It, it, it's safeguarded for future development and normally for, for the next planned period, not part of this current planned period. Um, so you can kind of never say never to these things because, um, the, the, the can always be sometimes a way of, um, presenting the, a, a, a valid argument, but certainly from a, from a strategic sort of and planning perspective, it's not something that we would be looking to, to use that land as if it's, um, available for development during this sort of plan, the, the, the current planned period. Um, so I think in, in, in that respect, um, that there is a degree, you know, there is a degree of protection over it's safeguarded for future, future development. And that development have to be then would be justified. And what we're saying at the moment is that in the same way, we're saying with the housing allocations where we're removing them from, uh, the green belt, it would be slightly perverse that we then go along and we just put some housing in a, in a land of, that was safeguarded only a, a, a year or two ago when we, it's a much longer term, uh, planning proposal that we're looking at here for the, for the next, uh, for the next period. So, um, extremely unlikely, um, that it would, that it would come forward. But like I said, I've been doing the job too long to sort of absolutely guarantee anything, um, other than just, um, you know, that there will be a strength of argument to, to be able to defend any, any, any development.
Um, and before we go, is it okay councillor, uh, uh, Nicholas? Uh, before we go any further councillor Nicholas, you earlier asked a question about whether or not safeguarded land can be put back in the green belt. Mister Malcolm may not have any experience of this, but I do, albeit it was a site in, um, Surrey where it had been safeguarded land. And when the next review took place, uh, it was put back in the green belt. But that was more to do with the fact the chat box, they want to speak, then please do so, unless you, your chat box is not working, in which case can you please let Sarah know so I'm advised and I can then look for a hand? Thank you very much. So councillor Williams, the floor is yours.
Okay, thank you for allowing me to open the batting. Just to get the debate started, first of all, just a few general comments and I won't ramble. There are things I think which are welcome in this SADPD, particularly the issue around allocating additional sites for travellers. I think that needs to be noted. The other issue though, the main issue that I'm concerned about here, as you'll have guessed already, is the issue around how we draw boundaries and obviously there'll be opportunity for Mr Malcolm to come back on this one because it strikes me that there's no one size fits all approach to this. If I can be parochial for a moment and talk about the Alsace issue, there was representation made through people who involved with the neighbourhood plan about where we wanted the boundary to be drawn for the town centre and it was left as, as it is now. So in some ways, yes, officers can determine where that is, but you know, we've, we've mentioned neighbourhood plans several times already and to me, I might be naive, but surely it is up to the, the people of communities to identify where they want the boundaries to be set. I accept the point that was made earlier about a tighter boundary in some instances may maybe beneficial in terms of deterring unwelcome development, but in instances where, you know, with the Alsace case, the town centre boundary was put forward by people involved with the neighbourhood plan because they wanted to see those areas, only just outside the limits of it now can be included to facilitate public realm activity looking for grants etcetera for events and things like that. And there's a feeling that that's now been limited. Now, in those instances, nobody's expecting anybody to come along and plough at Milton Park and build houses on there. But you know, it strikes me as if it would be better for that to be included in the town centre as a town centre facility, which would then give a platform for us as a community to put in bids and make representation about activities and events in that space. In other places, it might be the opposite. It might be beneficial to have the boundaries drawn very, very tightly indeed in order to protect assets, to protect that area from unwelcome development. So I can see two sides here, but surely there should be some flexibility. And I would be interested, you know, we can't change the policies, we're not here to debate that, nor have I any wish to delay the processes because I think that could be dangerous and we could lay ourselves wide open as has been said to people taking advantage of that. But at the same time, I would like to propose that we put something in there which gives communities, as it were, the right and the say to determine how they want to set their own envelope, as it were, their own boundaries, to give them say alongside officers, but we have made representation on several occasions, the officers over this, this issue in Alsace and each time our requests have been batted back. So that's the parochial point. The wider points though, I think is one where I'd like to see democracy in action. We've had representation from various communities here, all voicing valid concerns. I think there should be platforms for that, those concerns to be had and sort of somehow built into the plan itself in some way. That's the point I'd like to make to get the, get the batting started.
Okay, thank you very much. Before we go any further, Sarah needs to say something. So Sarah, can you come in and explain what we're doing wrong?
Yes Chairman, no, nothing wrong. I just wanted to clarify with councillor Williams that he was making a formal proposal that he wanted. I'm assuming he wants to move ahead with a recommendation, but also I didn't mention allowing this further recommendation about communities forming their own boundaries. Was that a formal proposal or what?
I anticipate that that was a formal proposal Sarah, but what I intend to do is because this is not like a planning application, I'm making a note of any where there, where proposals referred to in members speaking and I will come back at the end to clarify that they want it to be a proposal and then we will look for perhaps incorporating, because I anticipate there might be a number of proposed suggestions to the portfolio holder with regards to the current document, given the questioning that's been asked and the points raised by the public speakers. So I understand where you're coming from because you're seeking clarification for the minutes, but what I intend to do is if you have got a proposition, if you can make it clear, but not in the format of a formal proposal and I will come back to you at the end so we can tie all the ends together. So I think that might be the best way forward at this stage. I don't want to be having to have votes and secondary votes throughout the process if that can be avoided.
That's fine, I understand that clarification.
Okay, I'm now going to, now I've lost my piece of paper with my speakers on. I'm now going to ask councillor Finlow and then councillor Redstone please.
I was going to ask David Malcolm, there are 13, I think, local service centres. How many have housing sites in green belt earmarked for safeguarding?
I don't have the answer necessarily to that. I'm just gonna, so how many local service centres have sites in the green belt?
Earmarked for safeguarding. I was thinking David of your comment about sound and unsound earlier on and my point about you could remove by prioritising those in green belt. You could remove them and it'd still be a sound plan overall because you're only removing presumably at the margins, the most controversial ones.
So safeguarded land only exists in the green belt anyway. So for example, Audland wouldn't have any safeguarded land because it's only countryside.
It's at all, all 13.
Then I can, I'll, I can try and come back to you with, with an answer to the question or ask a colleague to sort of look at that in, but it's just as a as a, as a point of clarification, safeguarded land only exists in, in, in green belt. It doesn't exist in countryside. So just as, as an example, Audland, for example, is not surrounded by green belt unlike the likes of Bollington or Presbury for example. So as, as, as an entity, we can quickly, I can yeah, I'll, I'll let the debate continue, but I can come back with a number to say how many are how many of those have safeguarded sites around them. But it will only be those that have got green belt in the first place.
Well, if we are to prioritise, and I think we should, green belt, then provided that is not such a significant number to render the plan as a whole unsound, then there is some latitude, as I suggested earlier on, to remove a couple of them.
Okay.
Thank you Chair.
I would like, sorry, I would like to say that for clarity, it is land safeguarded, land safeguarded from the green belt is its formal title. So that's, the confusion might have not existed if we'd called it that, but we do use the shorthand version of safeguarded land and it does cause some confusion. It's a bit like people think green belt, green spaces are the same thing. Right, so I now have councillor Redstone and then councillor Hogburn wishing to speak. Can anybody wanting to speak please indicate in the box please. So councillor Redstone, floor's yours.
Thank you very much Chair. I think there's three things that I'd like to talk about. One, I, as my fellow councillor mentioned, I'm pleased that there are two gypsy traveller sites included in this plan. And I have some concerns that they are in open countryside as I've got concerns that they're not sustainable in terms of education provision for young children. I'm pleased that the natural environment section, second, chapter four has some good things in it. I just hope that they're given a higher priority by the planning department when they're, when they are considering a site. The windfall led approach, I've got some doubts about myself. It seems very random, will lead to unplanned development. I know that towns and settlements will need to have growth to be sustainable. And I also take the argument about demographic profile. But I don't really see how windfall sites are going to provide all the growth in housing numbers which the shortfalls of the last 10 years and probably of the future 10 years are going to generate. I think the, and I think this needs to be looked at. I'll leave it there.
Thank you very much. And I now have councillor Hogburn please.
Right. Really just a couple of points. One of them is, is definitely to welcome the adjustments to the policy HOU4, houses in multiple occupation. Particularly where it refers to in effect, limit, well, limitations on the proportion, the ratio of of HMOs that there may be in a neighbourhood. As it says, yeah, permission will be given provided that the number of existing HMOs within 50 metres of the application site does not exceed 10% of the total number of dwellings. And I'd have to say that, and I'm saying, I'm speaking here obviously as a Crewe South Ward councillor where in Crewe South has 42% of the HMOs, it might be even more now, of all the HMOs in the, in the whole borough. So sadly for some areas, it's just, this, this has come years too late. Anyway, it'd be good to know that this is going to, that this, this new policy will be taken into account in deciding future applications, particularly in those areas where, which are particularly densely populated already with HMOs. So I do welcome that, that correction, that, that update. And I think the other main point I would make is in relation to the, the, the issue, it's not really a laughing matter, about national planning reforms. I'm sure we'll all have our chance to lobby government and to seek to seek some sensible outcomes, but as I've said before, I'm not holding my breath in that regard. But there is an important point within the the, the report to us, which, which basically says, the white paper contains insufficient detail to fully gauge the impact of the proposed reforms at this stage. For example, it is unclear what status the SADPD would have under transitional arrangements and how its policies would be affected by the intention that generic development management policies would be set only in the NPPF. So a further erosion of frankly, of, of any kind of local choice. But it goes on to say, a little bit further on page 157 of the published papers. Because the proposed reforms were in draft and subject to consultation and because of the lack of detail within them, it is not recommended that work on the SADPD be halted at this time. And I think that's, we, as a, as a board, we'd be well advised to, to bear that in mind. So when it comes to the time, there's a proposal that we recommend to the, there's a recommendation suggested for the, to the cabinet and we'll come to that in due course and I do hope that we will support that. Plus, of course, as the chairman has said, perhaps you could call them informatives, comments and suggestions from the, the board and it would be useful actually if some of the, some of the points made by public speakers maybe could also, maybe could be included as well. But I think we do need to try and make progress on this so that we do have some, some, some up to date, more up to date policies than the, than those that are being replaced by the SADPD, which themselves are about 10 years out of date. So we do need to update them, however imperfect. So I think that's, those are the two main points. So when it comes to the vote, I shall be, I shall be supporting the recommendation to go forward to the cabinet and so on. So that representations can be made by all concerned. I mean, it's important. Representation has been made today very well and they do need to be fed into the, well, into the sausage machine, into the system. Thank you Chair.
I think councillor Hogburn, you made a very good point regarding the, the white paper and moves going forward because if anything's slower than the development plan process, it is getting planning legislation through the House of Commons, which is I suspect why in recent years, governments of many hues have chosen to make parliamentary statements to change it rather than go through the system, which isn't always a, a good model. And we end up with all sorts of problems then. But that aside, thank you very much for your comments. Before we go any further, I understand Mr Malcolm has a response to the question raised by councillor Finlow to do with local service centres. So Mr Malcolm.
Yeah, thank, thank you Chair. I've just come to put my finger on the point of time. So effectively of the 13 or so service centres, there's Old Edge, Bollington, Chelford, Disley and Presbury have safeguarded land around them. Is the exception which does not. And if you read in your papers, you'll, you'll know that Chelford is actually taking some of Mobley's, as you like. So all the other, all the other service centres are, in fact, local service centres are in countryside locations. So there's five, six that are in green belt locations, five of which will have safeguarded land. Thank you Chair.
Thank you very much. List, several lists on the go now. Give them a second, fallen on the floor, that's why. So I'm now going to ask councillor Jeffrey and then councillor Nicholas.
Thanks Chair. Yeah, I generally really like the document. I love the way the viability assessment's been bolstered a bit because that's a source of frustration on this, on this SPB. Again, travellers, traveller sites bits good. Bolstering of the environmental policies, again, good thing. A bit disappointed that the energy efficiency requirements can be deferred on viability though. I think I, I thought they should be sacrificed given the, given the importance that the council's placed on it. So the, the only fly in the ointment for me is the the, the big good thing is, say, the green belt's been removed. So the only fly in the ointment is the, the safeguarded land and the justification for it. At the moment, I, I really don't believe that we've demonstrated that those exceptional circumstances have been there for, for the safeguarded land to be removed from the green belt based on up to date information. That, that is made on old information, albeit consistent with the local plan strategy from 2017. So I'd be and I'm also not naive enough to believe that this isn't going to go through today and that the cap, and that cabinet are going to hold it up to make any changes. Likewise, I'm, I'm a bit nervous because after the, after the six week consultation, I think the slides we had before are that it'll be going to full council. Do we get this bite at the cherry after that? Does it come back to us or does it go to cabinet prior to going to full council? I would, I would expect it probably does to show that all the, the consultation's been taken into account, but I don't know about that. So yeah, as long, I would say that happy for it to go to cabinet, provided they at that point are provided with a better justification than we've been given today about the safeguarded land allocation. I think that's all I've got to say Chair.
Thanks. So can I just clarify councillor Jeffrey, what you're saying is that you don't believe there is enough data to show data to show exceptional circumstances to, to keep, make land safeguarded. Not, you're not saying, because obviously we have two situations here, we have some safeguarded land and some land that's been taken out of the green belt altogether. And you're saying that you believe that, that, that the second action should go further and remove the safeguarded land too.
Yes. So there's some land that was being taken out, out of the green belt, that's now being kept in the green belt. Happy days, brilliant. What I don't think we've justified is the safeguarded land being taken out of the green belt. I think a, a portion should be, probably, but the 13.6 hectares, I don't think that figure has been justified properly based on up to date information.
And, and you're talking about those pieces of land that are specifically addressed in the SADPD, not those that are in the major document.
Yes, exactly.
I just want a clarification before we start saying that we're stepping on areas that we have no, no issue to discuss.
No, no, I think the core strategy, that boat sailed, but I'm, I'm talking about the SADPD.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any other people, councillor Nicholas wishes to speak, but can anybody else wishing to speak, please let me, let me know.
Yeah, can I go, Chair?
Yep.
Thank you very much. I've got lots of concerns that councillor Jeffrey's got as well. But if I can just ask David Malcolm just for a clarification. So of the five areas he's talking about, which said Alderley Edge, Bollington, Chelford, Disley and Presbury, can you tell me how many, how many allocations were there for those five sites? Do you have that number to hand? Thanks.
I can probably find out. Do you mean in terms of how many houses were proposed or as in, do you want a number of houses that have been removed in lieu of the safeguarded land or just?
Yeah, for each, so, but a total number then of, of, from the five.
See what I can do. All right, come back to you if I can.
Thank you. You're muted now councillor Nicholas. Do you not want anything else to say?
No, I don't. Thank you. Just wait for that.
That's fine. That, so you, it's a question. Anybody else wish to speak? I've got a few things I'd like to say from the chair. Okay, I similarly am not minded to in any way prevent.
So it's chairman's to interrupt councillor Williams wanting to speak.
Oh yes, so Craig, I, I can see that, sorry. And I've, I've even said yes. So councillor Williams and then councillor Finlow, because I can see councillor Finlow's hand up. So councillor Williams first.
Okay, we've had a lot of debates, but I just want to, on a couple of issues. This, this document has got strengths, but to my mind, it's also got some flaws and weaknesses. And I think what it doesn't do is address the kind of imbalance question. Now, perhaps that's always going to exist because you've got more green belt in, in the north of the borough than in the south, but and we have vested interests, I represent a ward in the south of the borough. And, but again, we are seeing, you know, all the windfall sites, where they're going to happen, they're going to happen down here. You know, that, that's the, that's the reality of it. And we need to sort of safeguard in a different way to the, the definition that we've been looking at here. We need to safeguard some of this and we need to create a balanced portfolio, if you like, across the borough. It's not going to be totally possible to achieve equity, understand that, there's so many different factors. But I, I still feel that there's a bit of an elephant in the room here with, you know, question marks about where, you know, can we meet the allocations with windfall sites? If so, where are they going to be? And there's only a few places that they like. And they all seem to be down in the south. The north's got its own problems and I totally understand places like Disley have got problems up there. Sort of get that. And I'm, I've never been one of these people to think, you're not in my backyard, let's push it somewhere else. I think, but we do need to look at all the, the borough as a whole and achieve some kind of equity. Going back to the, the original point, I'd very much like to, I, I don't think we can delay this, but I would like to see some on how the rights, if you like, of, of local people and their wishes can be preserved in, in the process. Officers are professionals, great, you've got lots of time for them, but it also, as councillors, we are representing local people. And I'm really concerned that local people's views are represented properly. That's just a general point. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councillor Finlow.
Yes, I want to agree with colleagues councillors Jeffrey and Nicholas on this one about the five sites. Can we not recommend to cabinet, which of course they may entirely ignore us, that the safeguarding be rescindled in relation to those sites? They be not recommended. I mean, in terms of north-south divide, you have to take into account the north has got, what's happened to the south Macclesfield development area? When are the applications coming forward? That's a significant, the planning applications, that's very significant in its own right, as is the whole of the Hanforth Garden Village. And in my ward, for example, an enormous new built in the green belt recently opened school in Alderley Road, Presbury. So there is some balance in those respects. I don't think we should overlook that.
Okay, well, when I, when we, when we have a wrap up, I will come back to that. Issue about the SADP land that's allocated in the, sorry, the safeguarded land that's allocated in the SADP. Right. So are there any other speakers that I've missed? Councillor Wetherall, because you're using the hand function. Can you confirm please that you don't wish to say anything further?
My hand was not up, Mr Chairman.
No, no, I know, but you were using earlier on and I just wanted to make sure I wasn't, I, I, because I picked up councillor Finlow, it's almost in error. So I just wanted to make sure you weren't looking to speak. That's fine. Right. I, I, I have, it was in, I think today's debate's been very interesting. And I think it's shown the wide range of opinions and how if you push in one direction, it has an implication for one group of people. But if you pull in the other, then you affect a different group of people. I am concerned about the removal of sites that were previously required. Not because I don't think the green belt is sacrosanct, because I do, but I recognise that actually as somebody who worked with the former Macclesfield local plan and other plans for this part of the world. One of the faults I always felt with that plan was that the green belt boundaries were drawn so tightly around the settlement areas that it actually caused lots of problems, not only for, in terms of the risk of developers coming along and saying, we want you to build, but also it meant that the smaller settlements often couldn't develop in the way that they needed to, to en- to ensure their own survival. And so if you have a village and you don't build any new houses, because people live much longer these days and they tend to, you know, they stay put. If when, as somebody pointed out earlier on, I can't remember which of the speakers it was, if the next generation comes along and they're unable to find a home in their own village, they'll need to move somewhere else. And when they move somewhere else, that means they're taking their children with them. And so the village school suddenly becomes at risk. And if you take that forward, it's not just a school, but suddenly the village pub is not viable anymore. Or the village shop. And I know that in some areas, you find that the village shop and the village pub are one in the same building and they operate different functions at different times of the day, which is a planning conundrum in itself. But I think we need to be careful that we are not developing this part of the plan, which is very much focused perhaps on our smaller settlements. That we're not so determined to protect open countryside, that we lead, have policies that lead to the inevitable decline of the villages themselves. And so I would be reticent about necessarily pursuing all of the things that are in this plan. And I will take the opportunity to make representations as a private individual. I think we as a board perhaps should not make recommendations about what should be done, more that we should be making recommendations of the points of concern. And although I note that there were several speakers on one issue, I am concerned about the proposals for Disley, for instance, because it's not an area I know particularly well, but I do know neighbouring High Lane, I have a friend that lives there. And I think that the, we need to make sure that on the periphery of our burrows and our, where, where we do have this connectivity, particularly in the north, with other, other local authorities, that we protect the spaces in the green belt. Where, because they're, they're slightly more important because we've only got control over part of the space. And I would like that, that, that matter, I think that matter should be looked at again. And I'm hoping that the representations that are made by the locals will, will ensure that. But I think there's a lot of, again, lots of good things in, in this document. But I also am concerned that the go, and councillor Redstone has made this point on a number of occasions, that actually, I think we might be jumping the gun a bit with regard to what we're trying to do now in taking these, some of these sites out. Because we don't have a secure housing land supply situation. We never can have a secure housing land supply situation. And the reason for this is that we are reliant on developers building out their planning permissions. We've already heard of one site where the planning permission has elapsed, that's 300 houses. So if we take those 300 houses and add them to the 290 that would have been provided on the sites that have been removed by the SADPD, we are, that's 600 houses. If we don't meet the requirement in terms of windfalls, and I'm afraid to tell you that my experience as a planner for 25 years is that windfall developments are often the first things to go during any downturn in the economy. Because on the whole, you're talking about small scale builders and they're often working hand to mouth. And if there's a downturn in the economy and they can't guarantee the houses will sell, they won't build. And so you get, you, you, if you look at, I, I'm sure if there was an assessment by somebody doing a degree, they looked at the downturn in the economy and the downturn in windfall sites, there would be a significant correlation between those two curves. And I, I, I think we need to recognise that we are in uncertain terms. And I think that perhaps the proposals that are being made now are being made on the back of very positive figures. And I don't think going forward that we can, we can assume that those figures will carry on for the long term. And what does that mean? That means if we don't have a five, five year housing land supply, we will end up with speculative developers, I'm not going to name any names, but we all know who we're thinking of, who will take pieces of land that are not in the green belt, particularly in the south of the borough, and they will submit planning applications, they will get refused by us, they will go to the inspector and the inspector will say, you Cheshire Rees don't have a five year housing land supply, approve. And that, to my mind, is not the way forward. And I think for the sake of 290 houses currently being removed from the, the site, I think we should keep those in at the moment. And because I, as, as safeguarded land, and I certainly wouldn't be supporting the proposition being put forward by three of the speakers today that we should remove even more safeguarded land or take any more land out of the green belt. So, because I think that is actually putting risk the rest of the plan and the rest of the borough's green spaces. Thank you. So after that, I'm looking for a proposition, please. Who wishes to make a proposition?
I was going to make one, but you're a Guinness, so perhaps not.
Councillor Williams.
I quite like what you've said, how you've summarised the, the debate. And listening to it, I, I'd be happy to support it, but with the addition of the issue that I raised earlier, which is about granting the right to communities to determine their envelope and boundaries, because I think, you know, we're talking about need and we're talking about planning for the benefit of, of communities. You know, we don't end up like a sites Pico thing about drawing lines on a map without consulting the Bedouins and everybody involved. And I think we, I would like to see something in there that goes to the cabinet about the right of communities to establish their own town centre or village nucleus boundaries, because I think that would, that would help. And it would sort of work in a way of engaging communities, in a way of reinforcing and strengthening strategic plans. So I'd be very keen to see that in addition to the aspects that you've already outlined.
Okay, just to say, I wasn't making a proposition. I will see how things go in the debate. I was just merely taking part in the debate. As, as colleagues will know, I'm usually an active speaker in these matters and I am finding it very difficult to sit on my hands while being in the chair. So, but I, I, I fully concur with your views with regards to local people and particularly those where we have a, an adopted or a nascent there should be full consultation with the people, the authors of those documents and with local communities when we're looking at the boundaries of villages and at the boundaries of town centres, because those local people know what their ambitions are for those areas. And it might be that a particular village wants to have a bit, a bit more leeway in its boundary in order that it can accommodate growth. And I don't think that's necessarily, and not necessarily in order to comply with, with an affordable housing policy perhaps. So I think we need to be a little bit more flexible on that. But I, I support your position on that bit bit. So I have two, three more speakers. So I'm now going to go to councillor Jeffrey, then councillor Finlow and then councillor Hogburn. And just so those looking in the chat box know, councillor Finlow's chat box isn't working, which is why he's using his hand. Okay, thank you. Councillor Jeffrey.
Yeah, it's just a question really to fill councillor Williams about how, how that input, how he sees that input working, because there's kind of that mechanism already in the neighbour plan scheme. And I'm just wondering how, how, if he's proposing, not proposing is the wrong word, suggesting that we do that as part of this consultation, how he sees it working, because I, I, I just, I, I can't see the planning authority doing that. Also, I like your idea of because normally we're a decision-making committee and I think we're, we're just behaving like a advisor or a scrutiny committee for this one. And so I, I like your idea of, we'll make a proposal with recommendations of the, what, what was discussed rather than and recommendations to them. So I, I think you said earlier that you were making notes on the points being raised. So at the end of it, if we.
I, I am, but I need to speak to Sarah because I, I, I've now got about six or seven different pieces of paper. And if I can read my handwriting, I'm going to be.
Okay, okay, no problem. But yes, I think it should be a, a list of the discussion points and our recommendations for it. Thanks, Chair.
Okay. Before I go to councillor Finlow, Mr Malcolm wants to say something.
Thanks, Chair. It's just to try and pick up point, councillor Williams, just to colleague was just highlighting on one of the policies that's already exists. So I think it's RET seven. And I'm not, I'm not necessarily asking you to go and find it. I haven't been able to find it myself. But within the, the commentary to that policy, the supporting text, there's a reference which might be the point that you're alluding to. And it's just that it does actually say town centre boundaries and primary shopping areas are shown, are shown on the adopted policies map, where the retail policies of the SADPD will apply. But then just to go on to say, neighbour plans may include their own retail and town centre policies, including the definition of town centre related boundaries and primary shopping areas where relevant, in order to support the specific policy approach and objectives as stated within the, and evidenced in the neighbour plan. So I think, and I'm hoping that kind of picks up the theme that councillor Williams was talking to earlier. We might not deal with it directly, but there was this issue about retail and giving that flexibility. So I suppose all I'm doing is highlighting that the, that there is some flexibility already within some of the policies. And it goes back to what I was saying before about neighbour plans, because they're still very much, you know, they're here, they're, they're still part of the development plan. And therefore, you know, it's perhaps just worth noting. And therefore, you know, it's perhaps just worth noting that. And I know it's a real, you know, it's it's a sort of slightly geeky thing in terms of the detail of the wording of the policies, but it is there. And I suppose it just highlights maybe the fact that, you know, we're doing our best to build in as much kind of flexibility as we can do, but we've obviously got to set it in the overall framework, otherwise, you know, if you like, the pack of cards is being built up by all of these policies, plus the local plan strategy. And if we start individually taking bits out, then potentially it has an impact, and I think you said yourself, Chair, that it then has an impact somewhere else. So it's just to perhaps, as a real detailed example, which I've said myself, I didn't want to get into, was just to highlight there is detail and there is wording within there to reflect perhaps just that particular concern that councillor Williams raised. I think, just to pick up on that point that you raised, I think my slight difficulty, and it's maybe the point councillor Jeffrey was sort of alluding to as well, is just I'm not sure this issue about how do we grant the right for residents to get involved in the process or have some flexibility. We've got neighbourhood plans, fine, but I think ultimately the process is that there's a consultation exercise, there's been another consultation exercise, there is the ability then to make further representation. So that's the process that we go forward with. So I hope that's just helpful, Chair. Thank you.
I would like to say that I do know that here in Nutsford, there is a conflict between the local plan map for our town centre and that which is in the neighbourhood plan. And I hope that it doesn't become a tool employed by a developer to parry one elected body against another. I think the point I was, and I understand where you're coming from, but I think that the issue with the Alsace situation appears to be that there has been regular communication between Alsace Town Council and Cheshire East, which appears to have not progressed matters. And I think that's why, I think that's important. But I also think, I wasn't suggesting that where there wasn't a neighbourhood plan, that the locals could suddenly decide where the boundaries were. I just wanted to make sure that there was a facility, that where the neighbourhood plan is either in progress or there is an existing neighbourhood plan, that wherever possible, those outcomes are similar for, so we don't have divergent documents. Because my understanding is that just as the SAD PD needs to be in compliance with the first part of the local plan, so do neighbourhood plans that operate within the plan area. So there shouldn't be any, but I know it all too easily that sometimes there are differences. And I'm just hoping that when the final document is approved, because obviously we are talking 12 to 18 months' time before it's adopted, that any neighbourhood plans that are adopted in that period are taken on board before the final document is published, if that is allowed through the process. So that's what I was going to make. So I've now, I'm afraid, right, Sarah, just so you've asked a question. I think at the end I will go back and yes, while I accept that councillor Jeffrey and I have got a different opinion when it comes to whether or not we should be removing land that was allocated earlier from the this document, that doesn't mean that both views can't go ahead if we are making a recommendation that these points be taken on board. So it will be for the portfolio holder and for officers to determine which weight they give to the arguments tabled by councillor Jeffrey and those who agree with his position and those who agree with mine. So I'm not suggesting that we arm wrestle it out here today, but I do think that there is room for all views and opinions, because at the end of the day, the arbiter is one inspector. And let's give him, make him earn his keep, shall we say. Okay. Councillor Finlow, you have your hand showing, so do you want to speak?
Okay.
Yes.
I'm wondering, I'm wondering what degree of confidence we have that we can do without the 290. My experience, and I appreciate there might be a difference opinion, there might be difference experience elsewhere, is I've seen in my ward, windfalls, plenty of them, organic growth. I've seen multiple houses being built all the time, multiple number of houses on a single house plot. So I'm reasonably confident and do without the 290, but I do adhere, certainly in relation to Presbury Lane, that this should be removed from the safeguarded bracket. But on a positive note, although I've often said to the planners, you seem to ignore policy H12 about low-density housing. I see you have perpetuated it in a way, recognising there are some areas with established low-density character that needs to be and should be continued to be protected. So that's a positive point.
Thank you very much. So anybody else wish to add to the, I think councillor Jeffrey wanted to come in back, didn't you councillor Jeffrey, or I called you? I've now, I will admit, I've now lost.
No, no, Chair, I've got nothing.
Councillor Redstone, it
No, no, I'm next.
And then councillor Redstone, I know what happened, it's because I let Mr Malcolm come in halfway through the process. So I've got councillor Hogburn and then councillor Redstone.
Well, I want to see progress made, so I'm quite prepared to propose the recommendation that's within the paper at point 211 and 212. So I'll move that recommendation. And hopefully there'll be a second, if people then wish to amend or to add comments, that's entirely up to them. And I'm as I've said before, I am your flexible friend. I can quite happy to add comments that perhaps the cabinet might wish to note. But I think we do need to make progress, because either we're going to approve this or we're not. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Councillor Redstone?
Thank you, Chair. I broadly support councillor Williams and yourself's suggestions. But I really do want the issue of unsoundness of the housing figures to be addressed by officers. And so I would like that particularly emphasised, because I do think that this is going to come and cause a real problem in the future. Which is obviously something we should all wish to address now rather than when it's too late.
Okay, right. I'm just going to liaise with Sarah. We have a proposition from councillor Hogburn. I think it's generally agreed amongst those who've spoken that they would like us to make some form of representations of issues of concern, which are not objections, but they're issues of concern where we feel perhaps further work needs to be done or where there needs to be clarification of points. So one of them is the soundness of the housing land supply situation, given the current circumstances.
Yeah, I've got that one, Chairman, so that's one.
The second one is the issue of the working in the policies of neighbourhood plans into, to ensure that we don't have conflict between neighbourhood plans and the SAD PD in terms particularly of village and town centre boundaries, but also perhaps in other areas as well. So the issue is continuity of approach between neighbourhood plans and SAD PD.
Yes.
The third point, I think, relates to whether or not there is any need for safeguarded land within the SAD PD, given that we have large swathes of safeguarded land elsewhere. And that only affects, and I think the other area is whether or not the removal of the 290 houses is supported, and this is where we have the conflict between what I was saying with councillor, whether or not it can be supported. And I think there needs to be a lot of work on the evidence for that going forward, because I think it is an area where the SAD PD could be open to significant challenge, not only by the people who own the pieces of land concerned, who are going to be rather disappointed, to put it mildly, but also from other interested parties, developers, et cetera, who might use it as a lever to query whether or not we have enough land for a stop. And we might find ourselves open to all sorts of considerations, because I suspect in addition to this, there might be some developers coming forward with concerns themselves. So David is about to come, David's turned his light on, so I know he wants to speak, but I will come back to, and at the please, please don't believe that this is going to be, and if you object to any of these, let me know. And I can see that David's coming, David Jeffrey wants to speak. So I'm just trying to bring everything together to move matters on, which is what I think we will want to do. So Mr Malcolm?
Yeah.
And then I'll call councillor Jeffrey.
And that's kind of where I was heading myself, Chair, and I think, so I think quite rightly we can provide comments for Cabinet and I think, you know, happy to pass those on. So we've got this issue about, you've mentioned the soundness of the housing land supply, the issue that councillor Redstone was made. I've kind of looked at that together with the last one that you were just talking to, which was intervening a little bit, was to say actually it's the same issue, as in the soundness of the housing land supply is because actually is the evidence of the removal of the sites, even though it's only a small number of houses, and I've reiterated that, but I get the point. It's as I say, actually, we need to make sure the evidence for the removal of those housing allocations is soundly based, because it may have a consequential impact on the housing land supply and ultimately down the line, unplanned development. And so I've got that as one.
Now, that's fine. So we've got that, we've got the continuity between the
Yeah.
the SAD PD and the neighbourhood plans, and we've got
Safeguarded land.
And whether or not we need safeguard, any further safeguarding land allocated in the SAD PD. Right.
I've got you.
Not any, some safeguarded land, not rather than any.
No, no, I was suggesting that actually, we given what we're being told elsewhere, do we need to allocate any safeguarded land in the SAD PD? I'm not suggesting that we revisit those areas which include my own parish, where we have rather large swathes of safeguarding land. But within the SADPD, does it actually have merit to this? I understand why the officers have done it, I understand why it's there, but it's quite clear from speakers today there is a question mark about whether it's appropriate, given that we are being told that we are at or above our housing land need. So therefore, why are we allocating yet even more land? Surely we can wait and do that at the next stage when we're planning for the 2030, or given the government's proposals, perhaps 2025. So councillor Jeffrey, would you like to come back?
Thanks, Chair. Yeah, it was just really to clarify my point, because I think what yourself and David Malcolm have just said is that one of the points is, have we got a sufficient, sufficiently robust argument for the removal of these sites from the Green Belt, from not taking them out of the Green Belt? And my point is kind of the flip side of that, have we got sufficiently robust evidence for leaving those safeguarded ones in?
Yeah.
It's the robust evidence I'm looking for.
Okay. Are there any other points that I've missed that people want to specifically include in us referring? I would like to add the issue of the Disley situation, because I think there seem to be a number of different issues relating to the allocation, particularly the issue regarding the geomorphology of the site and the impact that has particularly on air quality. And whether or not we've got evidence to show that actually there isn't a particular problem there that would perhaps rule that site out.
I mean, once you start, Chairman, talking about one particular site, I'm tempted to suggest others.
I was merely suggesting councillor Finlow that given the level of thing that we asked him to review the data.
I'd like the data to be reviewed for Presbury Lane, Presbury, because there's a case in its own right, there's substantive things about sustainability.
And I would have to say the same with Bollington then.
Well, I understand, both of you gentlemen can do that through the necessary process. The fact of the matter is, this board has been presented, and we as a board are not supposed to be parochial. This board has been presented with significant representations relating to one particular site. And I think given the level of that, it wouldn't be inappropriate of us to report that to Cabinet. So Cabinet are aware that we also, it has raised questions. I'm not suggesting that I agree with the comments made or disagree. I'm merely saying that the level of representation to me means that I think it's appropriate that we make representations to the portfolio holder, who may be listening to this or may not be, but so she is aware when she is making her decisions and her representations to Cabinet on Tuesday, that there is a particular question mark about whether or not all of the boxes have been ticked. Councillor Nicholas?
Yeah, I just, thanks, Chair, I just want to point out, there were two representations from people in Bollington as well. And I know we're not supposed to be a parochial, but you know, two people from Bollington did come up and speak, and I think spoke very eloquently, if I may say, as did one person, Mr Yates, all very eloquently. I think if you make, start making exceptions, I think it's a very
I am, I am prepared to suggest that we also add Bollington and Presbury into this in order that we can make the, but I think that the
Agreed.
The issue with the, I want to call it Jack something, but the site in Disley is, there was a it might just be that they were very well rehearsed, but there were a range of different issues. And I was particularly taken with the issue regarding the problem with the pollution. Okay, but I'm happy for the others to be added. It's not, I'm not saying no, I'm just saying that I think that was why. Councillor Finlow, your hand is up.
Well, yes, I'm agreeing with you now.
Oh, okay, right, fine, that's okay.
Mention all three.
Are there any other points?
I don't think it'll do any good, but do.
Sorry?
I'm sceptical when, sceptical as to when it gets to Cabinet, whether the point of view will prevail. But nonetheless, I agree with you, please do it.
That is not for me to determine, that is for Cabinet to determine. I'm merely trying to corral our opinions so we look like we are a board that knows what it's doing.
Very well, thank you.
Okay, so are there any other points that people want to be added into the recommendations we send forward to the comments we send forward with the recommendation to Cabinet? Speak now or forever hold your peace. Okay, Sarah, are you satisfied that we know what we're voting on?
I am, Chairman. It's just been brought to my attention that councillor Critchley's put in a chat, he lost connection. Now, I need to establish how long you lost connection for, because it's my understanding that any councillor that doesn't hear the full debate therefore can't vote on the actual proposals. And Sheila Dillon can clarify that. But I don't know how long he was missing from the meeting for, so if he could clarify that and then we could perhaps get some legal advice, you know, half your time is missed. Thank you.
I will do that. Councillor Critchley, can you turn your mic and phone and camera on?
Oh, the camera's not, the mic's off, I see the camera's not
I can hear you, it's fine.
Is that, is that okay?
Yeah. Can you please advise Sarah how long you were out, you fell off the
I, it must, it can't have been any more than three or four minutes while I had to go off. I came back on at 15:10.
Okay. And do you know who was speaking at the time you left and whether or not the same person was speaking when you came back?
No, it wasn't the same person.
All right, okay. Miss Dillon, can you advise councillor Critchley whether or not he's been absent sufficiently long enough to not be able to vote, please?
Well, I'm afraid three or four minutes, it is some gap. Of course, it's very hard for all of us to know now what was missed, how key that was. And of course, there is going to be a roundup by yourself before we take the vote. If we were in the council chamber and someone left for, yes, as long as three or four minutes, I think everybody would accept. But even though short, if you're not there to hear the full debate that's going to help you form an opinion, then you shouldn't take part in the vote. So this is, this, you know, of all, of all the facts that there could be, this is pretty borderline, isn't it?
Yeah.
But in those cases, it's best to err on the side of good practice.
Okay. Councillor Hogburn, you have your hand up.
Well, I'm afraid, I frankly don't agree. We've been here five hours, there have been many, many
We've been here five hours, there have been many, many speakers, councillor Critchley's connection disappeared, say for three minutes, and from what I, from my recollection of what's been going on in the last 10 minutes, basically, I have proposed the recommendation as printed, nobody has yet seconded it anyway, and you, Chair, were in the process of, shall we say, establishing any comments or remarks that might be forwarded to the Cabinet for consideration. And I think you did say that you were going to corral those, so presumably then I can accept them as an addition to the recommendation, and that hopefully somebody will get around to seconding that proposition. So this is not a planning application, this is policy. Is it now being suggested that when we're discussing policy and consultations, that because they refer to planning, we must, we are not allowed even to leave what will be absent from the meeting for a matter of minutes? Planning application, I could understand. So I'm afraid I respect what Miss Dillon has said, but I don't agree with it.
I also respect what Miss Dillon has said. I intend to suggest that Mr Critchley can exercise his vote, but that if there is, it is deemed that that is not, if it means there is a marginality in the recommendation, so if Mr Critchley's vote makes a significant difference to the outcome, then I will then take further advice. And, but I think at this stage, my feeling is that we might find ourselves in a unanimous situation anyway, but Mr Critchley should at least be able to exercise his opinion. I understand where councillor Hogburn is coming from, it does seem it's all a case of proportionality, and, but I also understand that we do have to ensure that we act in a legal manner. So I'm going to go back to Miss Dillon, but I am also conscious that David Malcolm wants to speak.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, my advice is that on the side of good practice, yes, even though discussing policy, if a councillor were to have left the room for three minutes, we wouldn't expect them to come back in and think that they could take part and vote. So good practice is in favour of not taking part, and we can't really review the decision after it's been taken. Once it's been taken, that's it. We can't review it if it's 6.5 as opposed to, you know.
No, I understand, I'm understanding where you're coming from. What I might.
Sorry, 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 Chair, in that, in that situation, I will abstain from voting.
Thank you very much, councillor Critchley, you're a gentleman.
No worries, I will still listen to her, obviously.
No, that's, that's fine, and what I might do is actually ask you which way you would have voted if you had it, but we'll keep that off the record.
He wants 2 million, actually.
Okay. Are you okay, councillor Hogburn? Now, Mr Malcolm, do you need to come back in, given councillor Critchley's decision to resolve matters by agreeing not to vote?
Sorry, Chair, I was actually just trying to just, well, not clarify, but just help to perhaps move it on a little bit, was in reference to the issues over the safeguarded land, obviously that was a key point that we've raised, and okay, this need for safeguarded land, so I was just going to suggest that rather than making a specific point around Disley, Presbury and Bollington, because those are the ones that we heard people speaking about today, was that that would be encompassed in, because councillor Jeffrey talks about having robust evidence. So I think to me, it's that need for the safeguarded land within the SADPD, and ensuring that there's a robust evidence base to justify all of the land as indicated. I mean, I'm happy to make a specific reference to Presbury, Bollington and Disley if you like, but for me, it's that generality about.
I understand where you're coming, I think if we put, at the end, that we put including and put those three towns.
That's fine, yeah.
So councillor Hogburn, are you happy to accept the, I'm sorry, but every time I try to look at the screen, an email comes in and I can't see it. So councillor Williams is wanting to speak, I'll let him speak and then I'll come back to you. Councillor Williams.
Thank you, Chair, just, there was one occasion at Macclesfield when I had to leave a meeting for a few minutes, and after consultation, I think, if my memory serves, I was allowed on that occasion to continue with the vote. So I feel in the, I don't know whether Sheila Dillon or Sarah's got any recollection of that, but I would not want to see Anthony Critchley lose an opportunity that I myself was given in similar circumstances. I think I'd like that particular issue to be addressed, please.
Thank you very much. I'm also conscious that councillor Farrell wants to speak, and he hasn't spoken yet today. Ashley, what do you want to say? Councillor Farrell?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, on the issue of councillor Critchley, I feel obviously these aren't normal times, and you know, internet connections do drop out, so I think that should be taken into consideration in this debate. It's not like councillor Hogburn noted, it's not a planning application, it is advice for us to pass on a recommendation to Cabinet to decide, but I think the length of time invested in this meeting so far, I feel it's kind of a gut punch to tell councillor Critchley he's not allowed to take part in the decision-making process. I feel, you know, common sense should prevail here, and you know, if someone momentarily loses connection, I think we just need to take that on board. Also, just to move things forward, I'd like to second councillor Hogburn's motion. Thank you.
Okay, right, before we come to that, Mr Malcolm wants to speak, and then I intend to go back to councillor Hogburn to see whether or not he confirms those points.
Yeah, all I was going to say, councillor Critchley's already said he'll abstain, and I think we just needed to move it to the vote. It's, you know, it's vertically set out, Sheila's given her advice, I would agree with that advice. I appreciate it's been a really long day again, but ultimately, you know, there has been information that's been missed, and therefore the sensible thing to make sure we have a sound vote is basically just to abstain, as councillor Critchley has advised. So I think we just move on, we've now got a second, so perhaps we move that forward with the, with the four, well, no, the three main elements, soundness of the housing land supply, with the evidence to make sure it's robust for the housing allocations, policies of the neighbourhood plan to ensure there's no conflict such as the boundaries, and the final element, which was the need for the safeguarded land in the SADPD, and robust evidence with particular focus on Disley, Bollington and Presbury.
Thank you very much. Councillor Hogburn, do you agree to that amendment to your recommendation?
I am happy to accept those words.
Thank you very much.
I assume that councillor Farrell will happily.
I will ask him. Councillor Farrell, can you confirm that you are happy to continue to second in its revised format?
Yes, Chair.
Thank you very much. So I will now go back to finding my list of names. Right, here we go. So we have a proposal by councillor Hogburn that we accept. Right, I'm back, I haven't left the room. We have a proposal by councillor Hogburn that we have, accept the recommendation in the officer's report, that we say that this should go forward to Cabinet with a recommendation that should be allowed to proceed to the consultation stage. However, that we have those three points that Mr Malcolm has just raised, and I don't wish to reiterate them unless anybody demands I do so, and we, but they are soundness of the housing land supply situation, ensuring that neighbourhood plans and the SADPD are in line with each other, and to review whether or not it is necessary to allocate further safeguarded land in the SADPD, particularly with reference to Disley, Bollington and Presbury. So I am now going to ask which way people voted, and so if you can turn your camera and your microphone on, if you are able to do so. Councillor Critchley?
Not though.
Thank you very much. Councillor Edgar?
Four.
Thank you. Councillor Farrell?
Four.
Councillor Finlay?
Four.
Thank you. Councillor Jeffrey?
Four.
Councillor Hogburn?
Four.
Councillor Nicholas?
Four.
Councillor Redstone?
Abstain.
Councillor Wetherall?
Four.
Councillor Williams?
Four.
Thank you very much. That motion is carried, and thank you very much to everybody involved. It's been a long meeting, and I'd like to thank all participants, particularly those members of the public who came this morning. I'd also like to thank IT for resolving what, at one stage I was horrifiedly thinking that we're going to have to have yet another deferral, and so, as if by magic, IT have emailed me. So, and thank you very much to Sarah and to David for ensuring that this meeting took place reasonably swiftly. So it's now half past three, save two minutes, so thank you very much, and I will call this meeting to a close, unless Sheila tells me I've done something wrong.